Thank you for joining me for the August 31st Northwest Local School District Board of Education Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic, and one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Chris, can you call roll please?
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Detsel?
Jim, you're muted.
Here?
Mr. Yoshimura?
Here.
Mr. Tietzort?
Here.
This is Detsel.
Here.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, are there by chance any legislative updates, Matt?
I don't have anything to report for the legislative update at this time.
Todd, anything from you from that perspective?
Yeah, there have been two bipartisan House bills that they're putting together. They are currently out of session, but one of them is House Bill 358, which would remove state testing and federal testing requirements as a possibility, and the report card put on hold for a year in the middle of the pandemic. The other thing is we're starting to rejuvenate as an organization through BASSA, the Ed Choice piece that's out there. Senator Cupp and the new supposed Speaker of the House Huffman for the Senate, or not the House, of the Senate would be Huffman, and those two are collaborating on this to be on this bill to figure out what's going to happen with that. So there'll be a lot of pushing for us to get rid of Ed Choice altogether, and I think we have a really good chance of that happening in lieu of what we did prior to the pandemic and now starting up again.
Great. Anything else?
That's it.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, Mark, Matt changed something, and I can't see the agenda where I signed in. I'm just seeing what the public sees. Can Matt change that back so I don't see what that agenda? There we go. Thank you. I'm good.
Any Butler Tech updates, Jim?
Um, other than they started back to school, this is the second week. Everything is going good up at the four campuses. Um, no problems with kids wearing masks, and Mr. Graff said everything is going smoothly.
Good. All right. Next is reports from any employee organizations.
Yes, I have one that I received from the district librarians, and I would like to read it to you. It says, "To members of the board, we understand that this is a very difficult time financially for the district, and we are grateful for the work that is being done to recognize the difference employee groups in this manner. We provide a literacy-enriched experience for our students during a library special they participate in each week. We strive to bring a love of books to the children and to expose them to literature that not only engages them but has them begging for more like it. Most importantly, we help set the stage for children to become lifelong readers and learners. Though we are not teachers, we are charged with delivering lessons and supervising students. The technology assistant position has a similar set of responsibilities, and it will be very gratifying for library assistants to be thought of in the same way. We value our work," and our yes vote shows that you value our work. I'm sorry. "We value our work, and your yes vote shows that you value our work, and demonstrates the district's commitment to a relentless focus on literacy. Thank you again for your time and support." That's the only one I received.
Okay. I had talked to Todd. I was going to mention, I got some feedback from a lot of the, well, not a lot, educators within the district. A few of them that I'm friends with have checked in, and they couldn't speak any highly, more highly about how well the first few days have started off. You know, I asked them questions like, "Do you have all the supplies you need? Do you have this? Do you have that?" Everybody is incredibly proud of how well the district has come together and prepared for the beginning of this school year. I encourage them to send positive in, and I said, because, you know, a lot of times in this season, we tend to focus on just things that are going wrong, but I think we need to support each other and share the accolades for our successes as well. So I just want to tell everybody in the district, thank you for all your hard work and effort in providing a safe environment for our children to come back and be educated. Any community comments received, Todd?
No, no community comments were received.
And that brings us into 11.1, the adoption of superintendent consent items.
Yes, under the superintendent consent items, we have personnel, general business, resolution to purchase property, donations, and an MOU between Public Library and WLSD. Personnel items, I made reference in a video that we put out to our community and parents this weekend that we hired a contact tracer. We are assigned one by Hamilton County, but with a district our size and 1,200 employees and 8,500 students, we also have the need for our own individual one. Remember, we also service prokeo schools that we provide transportation for. I think one of the keys here is for everyone to know it's not a new position that we're taking out of general fund. We would not do that in lieu of the reductions we had to make at a former board meeting, but this is our CARES funding, and it is money that is used in a case like this for a pandemic. It covers our PPEs, our supplies, and it covers personnel when we need them in order to make sure the pandemic issues are addressed. So the other part is our vendor contracts. All of them were budgeted for. There is nothing new there out of federal or general funds. The resolution to purchase property is a execution of a purchase-sale agreement for the acquisition of property that is, as you enter from the backside on Pull Road of Colrain High School, the property to the left. So that will give us the ability to widen that entrance, maybe possibly put in extra parking if needed, or whatever is needed to make that entrance safer, and more importantly, lighting. So that is what the resolution for the purchase of property is. Then the MOU between the Public Library and Northwest Local School District is awesome. It is making sure that we have a partnership that allows all our kids to get a library card, so they have access to the library cards to get books anytime they need to. So the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding for that one. And then for all the consent items, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the superintendent consent items as listed.
So moved. Second.
All right, there's a motion in a second. Are there any questions or comments?
I do have two questions. So one, on the land purchase, Todd, does that still need to clear the sheriff's sale before it becomes available to us, or is it already available?
I'm going to call Chris McKeon to the meeting at this time. Chris?
Yeah, the property has already gone to sheriff's sale twice, which is required by law.
Okay. All right, thank you. And my other question is on the on the personnel items, what is that long list of athletic event workers? What does that consist of?
Athletic event workers are to run the stadiums at Northwest and Colrain High School or the gymnasiums for volleyball, soccer, and football. They collect tickets. They collect, well, right now, we're scanning tickets, so we don't have to exchange money, but purchase of tickets, and then running the score clock, the scoreboard, stuff like that.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, Mark, one thing, Matt, you put back up this thing for, there we go. Thank you.
The only thing I want to add is I love the partnership with the library. I think that's outstanding that we're connecting with resources like that in our community. All right, call and vote for the consent items. Great. That passes five to zero. Personnel items? Vendor contracts?
Should be down to 12-0.
Yep. These are broke out this, for some reason, this time. Okay, we're at 12.1 adoption of fiscal consent items.
Yes, good evening. For the fiscal consent items tonight is, first we'll start with the financial reports for the month of July. Our all-funds balance is a little over $67 million, and our general fund unreserved balance is $45 million. Our revenues for the month of July are almost $26 million, and this is 28% of our projections for the year because of our, we've already started receiving our second half taxes. And second half taxes have done very well. Most of our taxes do come in through escrow, so we're not seeing a dip. They're right on target with prior years. So even though we've had the pandemic and community struggling, right now, the property taxes are coming in as on target with what prior year projections, and so we're not seeing that dip down that we were concerned might happen. Doesn't mean going forward, as things catch up and the economy catches up, we may start seeing a dip later on, but right now, we are not. So that is good news. Expenditures are around $7 million, and which is 8% or right on target for one month into the fiscal year. Our investment weighted average return is 0.81%, and a year ago, we were over 2%, 2.5%. So interest rates have dipped down significantly, and we are seeing that loss of revenue in the current fiscal year. Our list of monthly bills are routine bills, as well as we had some staff and student software renewals as we gear up for the year, some property fleet and liability insurance premiums, transportation and custodial supplies as we are gearing up for this year with all the additional cleaning and PPE and other supplies that are needed. We have some auxiliary and grant fund payments for our non-public schools. And then with our then-announced certificates, we had six of them over $3,000, and this was, some were from the prior year that are just coming through to be paid, and others are just due to the chaos and craziness of trying to get ready for this year and just trying to keep up, and some items got missed that needed a purchase order prior to. It's just a renewal of things we have always had. It's just paperwork processing. So there are six of those listed that need approved. So with that, I'd like to ask the Board of Education to adopt the fiscal consent items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Great, there's a motion in a second. Any questions, comments? It will call for vote. And that passes five to zero. Thank you.
Next is the minutes. So I'd like to ask the Board to dispense with reading of and approve the regular meeting minutes from August 10th board meeting as listed.
Second.
Great, this passes four to one is an abstain for Matt since he was absent for that meeting.
Okay, and finally is the partial annual fund to fund transfer for our athletic transportation. Due to our athletics not being able to have their full attendance and admissions, they are down revenue. So we're recommending that we do half of our annual transfer that we normally do in January to help offset transportation costs, that we do half now, and then we see where things are in January and how the year's going, if we're still able to have athletics, and whether or not we need to do the second half of the transfer then. So right now, we're recommending that we do half the annual transfer and have asked the Board to approve the transfer from the general fund to the athletic funds as listed.
So moved. Second.
That was you, Matt?
Yes.
Any questions or comments? Great, that passes five to zero. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we move into superintendent update. Take away, Todd.
Thank you. Well, we're really excited. Today marks day three of our return to school, whether it's in-person or remote learning. The first three days have been tremendous. Remote learners and in-person learners are adjusting to return into school in different ways. The staggered start has really been helpful. It's been tremendously helpful in acclimating students and staff to our safety protocols for those who returned to in-person learning. This has allowed our staff to evaluate our procedures that we put in place and make adjustments as needed. It has also allowed staff to see the process in motion and make recommendations as they see things really go into place and kids actually moving through it. Our students are excited to be back, and our staff has been very excited. We had elementary buildings lining up with pom-poms cheering the kids in. We had other elementaries with the kids being met at every corner of the building they came to. So I think our teachers are excited as the kids in a lot of circumstances. Our model of cohorting is by far the safest model for returning to in-person learning, and our administration and staff are doing a great job of incorporating it. We're practicing four basic safety precautions every day. Same thing we want our parents, our students, our community members to practice outside of school. That's mask, good hand hygiene, cleaning surfaces when needed, and social distancing. These routines are addressed daily, and so far, our students are doing outstanding job with each. So it's been really fun to see. Our virtual learners have also begun and had virtual open houses at each school. We continue to work on proper login information and exchange of Chromebooks when needed at each school. If there's any issues, we'd like to think that every Chromebook we hand out will work correctly, but as we've seen, keys can be missing. Some things won't work. We can exchange them at school and get them, new ones as quickly as we can. So all it takes is for the parents to contact the school. Students' logins are being submitted, and we are monitoring our success rate. So we're asking parents to give us a rating about how they feel about the first couple days of remote learning. Yeah, it's quick. It's a quick turnaround. It's not all the kids, but when our first rating, we got a 6.8 out of 10. Is there room for improvement? Heck, yeah. And we'll get there to a nine or 10, but for the first two days and to have just the logins and the finalized Chromebooks, it's fun, and it's working. So it just takes time. Ask people to bear with us, be a little flexible, and things will continue to change daily as they have all summer long. Our teachers are collaborating, doing a fantastic job, are providing great remote instruction for our students. Couldn't be prouder of our in-person staff, our remote staff. They're all collaborating, doing a great job. In order for both remote learning and in-person learning to continue in a positive way, we will continue to monitor class sizes and doing our best to maintain six-foot spacing at all times. Mask in and out of school are so important, and we are counting on our students being the leaders at home. I think several of our athletic teams and our band and our cheerleaders and anybody who's been in extracurriculars are doing a great job of cohorting on their own. They're staying with their group because they have a responsibility when they go home after an athletic contest, especially if there's contact involved. Got to protect their parents, got to protect maybe grandparents or aunts and uncles. It's just following the guidelines and doing the best we can to make sure everyone stays safe. As I mentioned earlier, Northwest Local School District has been assigned a contact tracer from Hamilton County. We've also hired our own tracer to collaborate with Hamilton County out of our CARES funding. The tracers are the most important piece of our return to in-person learning. Cannot tell you how important they are. They will trace all contacts by an adult or student who contracts COVID, and then they will go back and they will notify those who have been in contact with someone with COVID. And they'll look at two important things that we have said from the get-go. Were you next to somebody for 15 minutes, or 14 or 13, but 15 minutes is their guideline, and were you less than six feet apart? If you were more than six feet apart, most likely, you will not be quarantined. It all depends on what the tracers find out. But for this to work, we need our staff, our parents, our community, and our students to cooperate fully with the contact tracer if you are contacted. It's not something where you avoid the call. It's something that is our responsibility to work together because our job is to protect everyone. Our seating charts are another important piece of the puzzle, because when the tracer starts putting a puzzle together, they want to know what's the seating charts, who was next to this person that tested positive. That is, then, they can find out how long they were next to them, how far apart they were, and do they need to be quarantined. And that's all in an effort to provide safety for everyone. Please bear with us as we continue to monitor transportation and the logistics of the times for pickup and drop-off. We're not going to be exact here. It's very difficult when you're not dropping off a full load of kids. You're going to get to houses quicker. And then you have to put in the cleaning that our bus drivers are required to do after every run they need to clean. So the staggered start may cause students to run early or late, and then once we get all in-person's learning on Wednesday, it could change again. I did notice the first couple of days of school, parents are excited, taking pictures of the kids, smiling ear to ear. Saw a couple of the armed forces. Parents come up in their uniforms, really a great sight to see, but it takes time the first couple of days of school. We saw that when we opened the new schools, and we're going to see it again this year. So I would suggest that the parents monitor the traffic each school's first full day, and there'll be different times. The buses may not be early anymore. They may be on time, or they may be a little late. Again, we're doing the best we can, and anytime we have a case of COVID, it could affect our driver. So we will have to change routes. We'll have to change times. We just ask for your patience, and then we're not always going to have the same amount of kids riding the bus every day. A parent may have an issue where they want to drop off or pick up. So a lot of things go into this, but our bus drivers' safety is important to us, and so we have to have seating charts, and have got to make sure the kids are in the right seats. So it's going to take time. So please remain flexible and patient as we deal with all the changes during this pandemic and restarting our school year. But overall, I could not be more pleased with a restart, but even that will change when all students come together once again Wednesday. So we'll have another change, but flexibility and patience is the key, as our safety will guide everything we do. A lot of people have come together to make this work. Our staff has collaborated. I know Chromebook passed out. We passed out close to 2,200 Chromebooks last Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and that was a collaborative effort from the curriculum office, Leslie, Andy, Zach, Brenda, working with the Colrain High School principals and administrators, and working with Matt Fisher and all his techs. I mean, it's taken a team effort to get all this together, and, you know, it's team efforts like that that will pull us closer together. It's the team efforts that are going on in our school building that will pull them closer together. And then it's just great to have parents comment. You know, we all have different fears. I cannot say this enough. There is nothing wrong with any fear you have. If you chose remote learning, you chose it for a reason. Good for you. That's great. Nobody should shame you or say anything to you, and vice versa. If you chose in-person, you should not be shamed. You're doing what you think is best for your child, and you being able to work, and the reasons you choose, but we respect all of it. Again, we gave choice like we wanted to, and couldn't be prouder of the way that everybody's come together to start this school year in the middle of a pandemic. So that's my report. I'd be glad to take any questions or any comments you've heard.
Can you speak to the first football games last Friday?
Yeah, I cannot tell you how well the first two football games went. Away game and the home game. Doesn't mean we don't have things to work over, but OHSAA is sending out OHSAA officials to monitor games. We had one show up at the Colrain game Friday night. He was very pleased with the spacing in the stands. They had it set up great for walkways going one direction and back the other. They even watched little things like how close is the team standing together on the sideline? Are they from the 40 to 40 and all bunched together, or are they spread out from the 20 to 20? So they know the importance of safety and keeping our spacing and doing what we're supposed to do, but they were very pleased with how things went. We'll keep an eye on how things go when we get on that bus afterwards. We got some things to work on there. So no, not everything's perfect, but our kids' safety, our coaches' safety, our bus driver's safety is key, and then our parents when they come to the game on Friday nights. And I want everybody to understand, we're following the guidelines by OHSAA, more importantly, the governor, and that is the only people who can come into the game are parents or close family members. And that's not something we just pick and decided to pick and choose as a school district. That's the rule for every high school. And so they also said no one can sit outside the fence or sit on their trucks and look over the fence. So those things, those folks will be asked to go. It's not trying to punish folks. I am very excited that the athletes this fall are getting more of a chance than we did last spring when we were just shut down, and those athletes and parents got no choice. So at least we're getting something. We're working on both schools to make sure we can provide live streams. I know Colrain was livestreamed, and will continue to be, and Northwest should be livestreamed this weekend if everything works out. So we want to provide those opportunities for parents and students to sit at home and be able to watch their teams play. And that's not just football. That's volleyball, that's soccer, so on and so forth.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? I just want to reiterate what I had heard by some educators, that they're incredibly proud of their buildings, the building leadership. The only thing I would say is, you know, we're kicking us off now, so please communicate with your building leader to our educators and employees that are watching. Please communicate with the building leadership. You know, we need your feedback. We can't fix anything we're not aware of, as Todd has spoken to previously, and just keep doing a great job. I feel very comfortable sending my daughter to school with the amount of preparation. And Todd, to you and your team, congratulations on such a good kickoff. Really, really appreciate it.
Thanks.
And it takes us into board member comments. Joe?
I just have a few things. First of all, I hope that everybody stays safe and healthy. Wear your masks. And the last thing is, please think of, please think good thoughts for Bob Angle right now. That's it.
Thanks, Joe. Jim?
Yeah, just want to kind of reiterate the same thing Joe said. Just everybody stay safe, do your social distancing, wear your masks, and just take care and, you know, any problems, let us know.
Okay. Matt?
I just want to say I'm thankful that we're, you know, back in session at school, and appreciate all the efforts of the staff, from the teachers to the kitchen, or cafeterias, rather, to the bus drivers, to administration, and everybody that's pulling together so that we can, you know, have both in-person and remote learning available for options. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Pam?
Pretty much everybody said what I wanted to say, but definitely want to reiterate what Todd said as far as the staff's done an amazing job and being, continuing to be creative, being positive. I love seeing all the pictures that I'm seeing of different ways that welcoming their students back to school, and I've heard good things also with kids that, you know, have decided to go remote. So I'm just really proud that this district has started off as well as we've started off. Of course, none of us can see, have a crystal ball to see what's going to happen next week or the week after, but the fact that our student athletes are having the opportunity to play, like you said, I will always feel bad for last spring, the ones that finished their senior year and didn't get to play and perform. So here's hoping to everyone staying healthy, and yes, the key is masks, and I really think the kids and students do a great job with that. And let's hope that we could keep this year going, and by January, things have really turned around. Thanks.
Thanks, Pam. Pretty much everything that everybody said, obviously, I'm in agreement with. There's a lot of pictures around social media. I'm going to tell you, the kids are unbelievably adorable in these masks. I hate that they have to wear them, but they're so cute, and you can see their little personalities in the masks that they choose. I want to thank the staff of our school district for what I consider a very successful start to a school year. There will be things that we have to work on, as Todd mentioned. We will work on them. We just need to know about them, show each other grace and patience as we get through this. As we've learned through the years, the best thing to rely on is each other. We've opened new schools. We've had other situations that through and through, we're our biggest supporters, and so just continue to support one another. And as everybody else said, hand washing and a mask, please do that. And with that, oh, and we will see Lakota West in the playoffs, and it'll be a different ballgame when that happens. Just to let you know, Mr. Bolden, that's coming your way, brother, guarantee. Other than that, that's all I have. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
So moved.
That passes five to zero. Thank you for joining the meeting. If there's need anything at all, please feel free to reach out to the district office for any questions or concerns. Thank you.